We'll call the council meeting and reconvene from closed session. City Attorney, do we have anything to report from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session to discuss the two cases of anticipated litigation listed on the agenda. City Council discussed those items with staff, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please make your call again?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here. Please join me for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, and Reverend Jane Quant is here to give our invocation.
Prayer or pledge first?
Prayer.
That seems appropriate. Let us pray. Oh God, known by many names and beyond all names, we begin by giving thanks for all those gathered in this room right now, each and every one here out of the love for the city. May not always agree, but it's not because we don't care. And so we pray that we might always keep that in mind as together we try to discern what is best for Lompoc. We especially ask your blessing upon those who have elected, who have been elected to govern here for this city council. We pray that they might always remember that they are called to serve all those who live here, no matter their religion, their skin tone, their age, or who they love, no matter their political persuasion. May they see themselves as servants of us all, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, as well as those who inhabit positions of power. Grant them the wisdom and courage to do what is right and good on behalf, and may they speak boldly when it's time to speak and listen patiently when it's time to listen, and may they always be guided by a spirit of community, of justice, and of mutual respect. We pray these things in the name of all that we hold sacred and dear. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And just as a reminder before we start, to please put your cell phones on vibrate or turn them off, and when you step forward for public comment, please be respectful. And if you have issues that should be taken in private appointments, please do so with that. Most of the matters that come before council should be city-related matters and issues that council can address, so thank you for that. City Manager, report please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few items tonight. Just a reminder, City Hall, the library, and most of the field offices will be closed next week as one of our ways to try and help decrease the current general fund deficit. However, utility payments that need to be dropped off can be done at the City Hall in the yellow box we have out in the driveway. Some good news, we're moving forward with more on the cannabis licenses, so this week we'll have approved, hopefully if I can get through the last one, five of them this week, so that takes us to 11 of the 26, so we're making some good progress. A big one, a reminder on Tuesday, January 8th, at 6:30 PM here in the chamber, the council will be holding a special meeting to interview possible applicants for the open council seat. I'd like to hope that we have a very full chamber that night of the citizens. Another one that's concerning everybody is the budget. What we plan to do, we mentioned it at the last budget workshop, is a budget transparency model. We're hoping to have the model up and running by mid-January. We're going to be having, we call it a transparency model, we haven't come up with a better name yet, but it will have, be interactive for the citizens or anybody that comes onto the website. They can see where we're projecting our current budget number to be for 2019, 2021, and try and help us come up with a budget for the year, because it's going to start off with a deficit, it'll have areas for possible decreases, increases, new costs that might come up. We're also asking if after all that, the residents come up with some possibilities we haven't on there, let us know, we'll add that to it. Lastly, this being our last council meeting of 2018, which is amazing, I just wanted to wish everyone in Lompoc a very Merry Christmas and a very Happy Holidays.
Thank you. Any questions for the City Manager? Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. All items listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to council vote. Any items withdrawn from the Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. I will now open the floor for public comment on the Consent Calendar. Seeing no one rise, I will close the oral comments on Consent Calendar and bring it back to council. Are there any items to be pulled? Councilmember Vega.
No items to be pulled, but I'd like to make a motion that we accept the full Consent Calendar. I'll second it.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. Now we'll open the floor for oral communications, and this can be on any city-related matter or issue. It is three minutes. Please step forward.
First of all, the grounds approaching City Hall are much improved. Thank you very much. It looks very nice. I'm Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I encourage the City of Lompoc to disengage from Calpers. A close look at Calpers' management is a cause for concern. The law states a trustee must act for the exclusive benefit of the beneficiaries considering solely their interests. At the budget workshop, we were advised Calpers invests in green stocks. The top-performing stocks over time are not green stocks. Calpers' new Chief Investment Officer, Yu Ben Meng, will report to Calpers' Chief Executive Officer, Marcy Frost, hired two years ago from the Washington State Fund to lead the $360 billion, with a B, Calpers Fund. Frost has expressed interest in pursuing a college degree. CEO Frost assures us that Meng, the newly hired Chief Investment Officer, has developed strong relationships while he served three years in Beijing as Deputy Chief Investment Officer of China's $3.2 trillion, with a T, State Administration of Foreign Exchange. Due to a nondisclosure agreement, Frost cannot provide specific investment performance of the China Fund during Meng's tenure. Frost stated Meng, a U.S. citizen born in China, will create a strong strategy for Calpers' investments in China. China stocks are absent from a list of top-performing stocks over time. The Chinese Communist Party dominates every facet of Chinese life. Recently, the Department of Justice, FBI, Department of Homeland Security, as well as 32 prominent scholar China watchers, reported a growing threat of Chinese Communist Party efforts to influence U.S. universities, media, think tanks, and companies have become so pervasive that they are undermining democratic processes in the U.S. According to the FBI's Bill Priestap, every time we look for it, it's not only there, it's worse than we expected. A Chinese spy agency is alleged in the hack of personal information from 500 million Marriott guests, as well as the breach and theft from U.S. Navy contractors. Everything from ship maintenance data to missile plans. I urge you to honor your oath of office, disengage from Calpers before the fund is transferred to China. Our long-range pension plan should be sustainable and invested in United States' top-performing stocks over time.
Seeing no one else rise, we'll close oral communications and begin with new business on the agenda. Item number six is positions and funding allocation changes in the Community Development, Fire, and Utility Departments amendments to the city's compensation and classification plans to include the revised Community Development Director job classifications and control points, adoption of Resolution Number 6231 (18), and City Manager Jim Troop will be presenting the actions.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm actually going to give just a brief summary, and then I'm going to have Gabe, our HR manager, give the more detailed piece. When I've been here, not almost six months now, it's gone quickly it seems, and during that time, I've lost my deputy city manager, and I've lost my assistant city manager, and I've lost my just recently city attorney, so I don't know what I'm doing, but it's hopefully not a trend. But with that, once Teresa left from the Community Development, Economic Development/Assistant City Manager position, I did go back and review that area for its current structure, its current efficiencies, and any other thing I could see in there. There is some changes I'm proposing tonight. The big one is actually moving the Building Department, if you will, to Building Division, breaking that tie between the Fire Department and the Community Development piece, bringing it back over to Community Development where planning is also residing, partly because planning and building need to be together, they do work hand-in-hand. That was one of the items. The other one was the actual designation of the director and changing that to a Community Development Director, looking at what we're doing now, what our hopeful goal is in the future. I'm foregoing an assistant city manager at this point, I'm going to just give it my best and go it alone, and hopefully as we turn the tide with finances, we can come back and revisit that, but for now, I think it's best to look at just a Community Development Director who will oversee the planning, the building, the, we'll call it Community Services, CDBG, some of the home loans, the economic development pieces under that, trying to remember the rest of that. So it's a way to make it more efficient, a work stream with what we have there. So that's the quick overview, my analysis of that department and the changes in that, and I'm going to let Gabe talk about the more detailed pieces on it.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So to kind of pick it up where City Manager Troop left off, there's one correction or one amendment I'd like to make to the resolution, and that is to not consider Exhibits A or B, which is the Battalion Chief Job Description and the Battalion Fire Chief/Fire Marshal Job Description. Those will need to be updated. The wrong job descriptions were attached, but I just learned tonight that there's some regulatory updates that we need to make also to the Fire Marshal Job Description, so we're going to bring those back to a separate council meeting. So I just want to give a brief history of what happened in the last two budget cycles. So during fiscal year 2013, the City Administration Division and the Community Development Department were reorganized into a Joint Economic Development Director/City Manager Department, and so there was a job description that was created and that position, so that allocation went to that new department. And then what the city did was, in that same fiscal year, 2013, the building, there was a building official/Fire Marshal and building inspector position allocations that were abolished, and then we went out to contract. So we had the building services contracted for a while. That contractor then canceled the contractual relationship with the city, and so what we did in 2015-17 by angle budget was create the position of Building and Safety Services Manager, which is a building official, and we maintained building inspection through a contract. So that's what happened in 2015, and now what we're asking here is to now move the Building Department, or actually create the Community Development Department as it was prior to the 2013 budget, and then bring building into that as City Manager Troop outlined. So, and then all the positions that were allocated from Fire, the Fire Marshal, Battalion Chief, that will then go back and be reallocated back to the Fire Department's budget, and then Mr. Wilkie can speak to the financial part of that. So that's kind of just the details of what happened over the last couple of budget cycles. So we're open for any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Garcia? Councilmember Starbuck?
Just a couple. Now, with the Assistant City Manager position basically deleted, the intent not to refill, and you look at the item increases and decreases, what are we, are we reallocating the salary for that position to all these other positions that we're bringing back in?
The schedules, the Table 1 and Table 2 schedules that are in the staff report relate to all the positions, budgeted positions that are in the reorganization, not just the Assistant City Manager. It's all the other, reallocation of fire personnel out of building back to fire, and the fire prevention specialists, the building inspection oversight, the Fire Chief and the administrative aide for the fire are partially allocated to buildings, so we're moving that back 100% to fire. So from an overall perspective, there's no change in the budgeted salaries or compensation. What is changing is where those are assigned to, and since the proposed reorganization is going to have some aspect that is under them that is non-genera fund, effectively CDBG funding, that will receive a little bit higher allocation than it has had in the past, because the Assistant City Manager was not significantly over that area, and they will be now. So the adjustment of about $25,000 is moving budgeted appropriations from the generafund to basically the three different types of CDBG activities.
Okay, well that, when we did this budget before, and there was the separations, there was also the statements made that this position will be covered 50% by fees, this position will be covered by fees. So if we go with this tonight, what is the disposition of the fees that these departments are going to collect at this point then?
All fees that are related to building will, all fees that are collected under any of these scenarios are generafund in nature, so they're all discretionary to the point of what can be used of generafund or resources. Having said that, building inspection fees that come in are typically used to pay for building inspection services. Those fees will continue to be received and not necessarily allocated to building inspection, but will be generated because of building inspection services.
So where would they be allocated? If they're building fees and they're not going to building, are we going to take them to public safety, to parks, or are we just going to?
Like I said, they're all generafund revenues, so the generafund is what it's called. Everything that goes in there is available for anything else. We do make some determinations that building inspection fees are related to the building inspection services, fire inspection fees are related to fire inspection services, but they're general in nature, so they're not like electric revenues coming in for the Electric Enterprise Fund, which are specifically necessary to be kept in the electric fund.
So what the proposal is then, that we're basically going to go ahead and allot this money out of the generafund to cover all of these positions and hope we can collect fees for development?
The only thing that we're allocating out of the generafund is $24,000 out of the $117,000 related to CDBG oversight and housing oversight. The rest was in the generafund and remains in the generafund.
I mean, so the other, another way to say it is, so everything that's been expensed today, where the salaries are going, it's the same amount from the generafund, it's just changing where they end up. So there's no addition to the generafund. What it actually is a subtract, a lesser cost, because we can charge $25,000 more that would have gone to the generafund, it's now going over to the CDBG funds that can be brought back into the generafund. So there's no extra burden to the generafund, it's actually a minor, but a savings to the generafund of almost $25,000.
Councilmember Mosby.
You can help refresh my memory. I know when we created the fourth Battalion Chief/Fire Marshal position is to be 50% or 75% self-funded. Whatever happened with that, remember way back when?
In July 12th, 2017, council requested to have this analyzed. When I went back and looked at the revenues, there were about 20% cost recovery before this position was created, just by one marshal, if you will, Fire Battalion Chief. After it was created, it got, we got closer to 50%, so that was the difference. It was about $80,000 where we're seeing now, and it was about $30,000 before.
Wasn't there a statement made that it'd be close to 75% funded?
That was the goal and the objective before, when this was brought to you guys, yes.
Because I mean, we created a fourth one, it brought it into building anticipating 75%, we got to 50%, and will it still have the capacity to generate funding?
Yeah, regardless where it is, it's still going to be that same cost recovery based upon the fire inspections and accident recovery and the revenue streams that were created during that process.
Okay, so we gained 50 grand by creating the fourth position?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. The other question is, without seeing the budget coming up, what is the rush of doing this? Is there a time deadline to push this forward, or do we want to look at more of this when the budget is moving through?
Part of it is, we're working with an acting director right now, so through the PERS requirements, that person can't work more than 960?
960.
960 hours. So when Teresa left and we moved Christie into that position, we'll be basically timing out on that. The other one too is, as things are going forward, hopefully with some new projects that might be coming down the pipeline, this will just lend a better hand on having the planning and building together and doing it now versus we could wait, I just think, why wait when we know what we need to do? It's not going to change anything during the budget, so my hope was just to get it done, hire the new person in that position, not worry about the Calpers, and then that person can then keep moving forward with the, any other changes that they might see that I didn't see.
Well, I just, I mean, you, earlier in your City Managers' report, you said there's going to be opportunity for changes, and I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be waiting until that opportunity comes? But you're telling me there's a 960 requirement, something like that?
That's one of the issues there, so then we'll have to find another person to then be an acting director at that point. So there is a possibility. From my own personal opinion, I think going forward would be the better move at this point than waiting to come to the budget, because to me, the same answer would be the breakup from building going to fire, reporting back to the community development, and then the minor reorganization that's within the department itself.
I just tried to think way back when, when in 2010-ish or something is when we, or well, I was on council then, but they did away with this combining and giving the Assistant Manager position, and there was a saving mechanism by going that route. It seems like we're actually going kind of backwards to where we were before. I mean, currently, right now, you say you don't need the Assistant City Manager, but I, I mean, I think that you, sometimes you say you do need one, I mean, it's...
We do need one. I think the way it was set up before was that person, it was tough, it's tough to be the director, Department Director, and then also take on the challenges of an Assistant City Manager. You don't always see that, it is there, it can happen, but it puts a challenge for that person to try and be the best they can as a director, but then also do their chore or their work as an Assistant City Manager. You know, if I was gone, they're having to do both jobs, and that's something I am missing now, because I'm having to rely on other department heads to fill in that gap. From a savings, I just, I see this as the most efficient way to do it. I've, you know, been doing it for a while, and I just think having split the building back to the department, having it become back to the community development, it just lends itself to a more streamlined process than what I see currently.
So you're telling me right now, this budget coming up, you're not going to be asking for Assistant City Manager to be funded?
No, I'll raise whichever hand and say no. I'm going it alone.
I'm just trying...
And what I'll be doing is looking to my department heads to say, hey, if I'm out sick, I need you to step in. If I need this, I need you to step in, and I'll probably share the pain and spread it around to everybody, but yeah, that's what we're doing. Until we can, until we can get back on more solid footing financially, I'll just have to go it alone.
That's what I'm trying to look at, like, again, I know I'm asking budget questions, but it seems, again, the 960, as Gabe pointed out, that is why we're trying to push forward sooner, faster, quicker. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Jim, the benefits of the restructure, you guys have thought this out also, I'm sure, okay? So not sure if, along with the restructure, you could point out some of the benefits to the user-friendly side of this, okay? Building and planning, it makes sense. The Community Development Department, it makes sense, but again, where Community Development Department is funded with grant funding, with CDBG funding, okay? So we also have a down payment assistance program that needs to be funded, so how much funding is necessary to be left in the kitty so that we're not running short with CDBG money, and what's the forecast in the future to say we're not going to run out of money? And then in that event, what happens, okay? When we're taking money to pay these people from there?
Right. The CDBG, honestly, it's always a, you know, roll of the dice, because it's up to Congress to decide how much they're going to allot to anybody. So I know over the years, most cities have been seeing a decline in CDBG funding. To say we're good now and we're going to be good next year and through the whole budget cycle, I don't have that kind of crystal ball. It does do a good job for the city, there's a lot of projects that are done through that, through, not just for the city, but through other nonprofit agencies that have put in for requests. The home loan program you were talking about is very good for the city. My only concern is that as we do this, we are getting into almost being a bank, if you will, and those loans, if they're a 30-year loan, we have to have someone processing that for 30 years, so we have to take that in consideration. Is that a benefit that we want, or, you know, with the benefit of the loan, that's a cost that we'll take on, that we'll have to have someone there. I've part experienced where it fell off the table for 10 to 15 years, nobody serviced these loans, and these people didn't know how much they had outstanding. So we had to go back and fix that. The financials, you know, the generafund is the generafund, we're not adding anything, we're actually saving a little bit. It does take a little bit more out of CDBG because of how the allocations work, about It's a balancing act, because without that, then the generafund, which is in a deficit position, takes a little bit more of a hit. Without it, if we go and take a little bit more from CDBG, that might be one less project that we can do for $25,000. It's, there's not a good answer.
I believe Mr. Wilkie also has something to add to that.
Okay, yes, okay.
Yeah, when I was looking at the reallocation of the appropriations, the allocations that are going to CDBG are out of the administrative component of CDBG, so it doesn't affect at all the projects or programs that are available through CDBG or their housing. It's all within the administrative component that's, which has adequate funding to support this.
I guess one of my questions is, with the CDBG funding, it's also, building is also a factor in replenishing some of that, that department money, okay? Some of the loan money was given by developers, you know, we haven't had a lot of build-out, but with buying of the covenants for low-income housing, so a lot of that money was put back in. So growth is a factor also of keeping money into the fund. My concern is, we have a staffing, we have current staff, but since we're calling it Community Development Department, and then we have a mixture of Economic Development, we have a unique opportunity of not being short on creating these loan programs, but also utilizing these with job descriptions, not to make sure that they're not just exclusively Economic Development, okay? If we're going to combine these groups, is there, and I'm asking a question here, okay? Is there not, is there some sort of job description now, because you're restructuring the department, that prevents them from jumping over the fence and making sure it all goes smoothly?
Right, no, there's nothing there right now. In fact, for the Economic Development side, with Teresa's leaving, it left only one person, but they're not, their job description is not, I forgot what it's called. but they're not, their job description is not, I forgot what it's called, like Jasmine's...
Yeah, the development specialist.
Development specialist, so that doesn't prohibit them from doing anything else. In fact, they're helping right now on CDBG, because there's a substantial, I don't think people understand how much reporting is required through the CDBG on what you did and what you have to put in for the next one. So she's actually, we're moving part of her allocation over to the CDBG, because that's where she's doing some of her work now.
I guess my concern is, so we take on these home buyer assistance programs, we should be able to facilitate, or we have no business being a part of it, okay? Because I can tell you that there's contractual obligations there, I get it. We're shorthanded in many cases, and they're doing an excellent job for the amount of staffing that's available, I want to point that out. So there's no throwing anybody under the bus here, these guys are working, okay, and they're doing it. The issue is, because of the other home inspections and because of the covenants they have with the low-income aspect of it, where they have to be out in the field and can't facilitate these files that are on their desk, or they're gone every other Monday, and then we're off on weekends, and we're off on holidays, we need to actually figure out what we're going to do here to facilitate these. Yes, we're not a lender, but when you take that responsibility on, you take that obligation on, there's repercussions. It's not just, you know, I think this is a unique opportunity as we restructure, to see how many we can handle, instead of taking on too many, and then we're not looking good either, and then the reputation of the city down payment assistance program is not looking good. I don't think we want that. I think we want to make sure that we're doing stellar service, performance, people are having this dream, and you don't want people to get disappointed during that transition of buying their first home, and then they get traumatized.
I agree with that. I think we just lost a person, she retired after many, you know, she'd been here for quite some time. Because of the deficit, we can't refill some of these positions, we're up to 27 open positions at this point. So as we go forward, be it for the program you're discussing, or any other type of program, we have to step back and say, okay, do we just want to do this half as well as we can, or do we want to limit what we're doing so we're doing it really well and not disappoint somebody?
Absolutely, Jim, and I guess the point I'm making is, on behalf of city staff, I see them working really hard to make this happen. They weren't prepared for the business they were going to get, and hey, maybe the limiting is probably the answer to stressing everybody out and creating something different in the budget process or in the allotment of hours for the worker. My other question is, by combining the building and planning, and you have a community development director, it sounds like you're going to have basically three managers within that department still doing what they do, and I'm not sure if that was the intent, because you have a planning manager, you have the building inspector, who's basically the sheriff, so to speak, of the building department, then you have community development director. So was the intent to make sure the community development director is basically the department head, or are they each going to, of all of it, to make sure it's facilitating, you're going to have job descriptions that are according, to make sure that everything is connected, so that if you have someone coming into planning, that it goes to building, now how does community development have a tie-in with that, or are they just there? Is it just because it's a, on the organizational charter, is actually, they're going to be a benefit to all three of these people that are within that department?
No, it'll be definitely a benefit, because somebody has to be leading that department of some kind. We have to understand, like, the building department, that consists of two people, Al, our building official, and Vida, who helps out, I can't remember her title, but at the counter. So those are the two that we have in the whole division. So yes, he is the building official, it's a manager level, but he's not sitting at a desk. He's either reviewing plans, or he's out in the field actually doing the inspections, because we don't have any full-time inspectors. So we have a contract inspector that we've hired, but again, on a contract basis. So Al's absolutely a working manager. In the planning department, same thing, Brian is an absolute working manager, it's not someone just supervising people. The community development director would then oversee, and I can't remember all the different areas, but along with the CDBG, which is very time-consuming, and so that person would have, right, so we have the planning, building inspection, economic development, CDB housed, and recreation, I'm sorry, I forgot about recreation. So they also have that over there, too. So it encompasses quite a bit, so they're not going to be someone sitting behind a desk. I won't let them, because I know I have a lot to do, so I'll be, if they are, I'm going to ask them to do some of my job, but I think right now, yes, there's, Brian, the manager for planning, is a working manager. Again, we only have two people in the building department, so they're both working, and then the director would also be a working director.
You know, Jim, one more question here, you know, how does it equate to better service and for the consumer, or is this just an internal organizational change? It seems like it is, but I mean, for the public, is it going to be, is there going to be any better, are they going to see any difference? It doesn't seem like, it sounds like it's the same. There's going to be communication in the background, which could turn out to be better customer service, I'm hoping, or maybe movement of the planning or building section, but I'm not sure if you guys have talked about that part, okay? We've talked about customer service and moving things along in the city so that we can actually be business-friendly, so it's not just a saying, because I think we all strive to do the same thing. We're all trying to do a good job, and I want to make sure that the public knows that we're also trying to improve service also. If there's any holes in the bucket, it may be perfect, you know, but...
I'm going to give kudos to every, you know, since I've been here, the building and planning, I believe, have gone out of their way to make improvements. I've met with them, we've, I think if you were to talk to people today, I've had three developers in my office two weeks ago, different times, and their comment was, Lompoc is so easy to work with, that, and these are the big developers, these guys are doing the big stuff. I think that speaks volumes. I think, if you go to others, they've seen that there's an outreach now. I think that's, it's different from what it was a number of years ago. I think we're pretty much all in step with what we want to do for Lompoc, that we want to be, you know, friendly to the people coming in, we are asking them to understand that there are rules and regulations that everybody has to follow. It's not yes for you and no for you, that everybody's on the same boat, going the same direction, and I think that's turning out to be something that they're liking. As to regards to, is there a change? Yes, it'll be more in the background, because once planning and building are working under the same direction of the department head, I think that will equate to better performance out in the front, but it's not that we're adding anybody, so...
Sure, sure.
That ability to have some extra people out front, well, it's, there isn't anybody that we're adding, we're just rearranging what we have.
Let me point out, I think everyone's doing an excellent job as far as for manpower, and back in the community development department also, I think we're all striving just to improve, to make sure that we have more happy people leaving. I mean, there's some people that, you know, hey, we know, we know what happens, but thank you so much.
Councilmember Starbuck.
A minor detail here, one of the things that funds this side of the House, Mr. Wilkie, you probably would know this, but I don't see it reflected in Table 2, is part of the Lompoc Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we also pull an admin fee off of that, which, you know, out of several million dollars in that fund, we use the admin fee to cover the inspections and all. Is that part of the Housing Successor Agency with the 0.05, or is that not listed here?
Well, the Housing Successor Agency is part of the overall Housing Trust Fund. We added, we consolidated them when the Housing Successor Agency became disentangled through RDA dissolution, and as Mr. Trup was mentioning, we have 30-year loans in the Housing Successor Agency that have no funding source. So we still have all these obligations to provide monitoring services for those loans, but no income from that. So if you recall, when we did that consolidation, we set up a maximum amount of allocation of the overall funding for both of those at 3%, which is roughly around $97,000, I believe. So this amount is part of that 97, and it's not exceeding the 97,000 on an annual basis. So it's still within the guidelines of the management of the funds.
Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll open this up for public comment. Please step forward if you have any public comments.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, John Lynn Lompoc resident. I want to take a step back, because we're contemplating unwinding something that I think we might want to talk about. Back in 2010, Councilmember Starbuck, along with four others of us, were all relatively either new or had served two years on the council, and the community had said, we want economic development, we want jobs, we want stores, and so our number-one goal was to look in that direction. And to that end, I talked with some long-term city employees who had been here many years, most of them are now gone, and I said, okay, when in the past did this work? Because we all recall that we weren't filling stores, we weren't getting housing, we weren't going forward, and we were still suffering the effects of the 2008 downturn. And to a person, they all said, well, when Dave Norman was assistant city manager, he was very successful at bringing business to Lompoc, and he didn't have the title of Economic Development Director, but for all purposes, that's what he did. And so the council decided that we should look at what we could do to make quick changes, and an ad hoc committee was selected, and Councilmember Martner and I were put on it at then-Councilmember Lingle's suggestion, because he wanted to see both sides of the argument, and figured since we just run against each other, we certainly could have both sides of the argument. And so we sat down to look at the entire city and what we could agree to on changing positions or eliminating them. And you'll all recall that we eliminated the Parks Urban Forestry and Recreation Director's position, the end of that, of the 2011 year, and we also recommended that the Community Development Director's position be eliminated, and the position of Assistant City Manager and Economic Development Director be created. And that was driven by the success that Dave Norman had had by doing that. So number one, he had the appearance of being a higher city official, and number two, the economic development was part of the job. That worked very successfully through the four years that I was mayor. We returned our sales tax to the 2007 peak. It worked over the last four years to some extent, and I think it would be wrong to make the change today. Now, if you feel compelled to do that, I would urge you to make that Community Development Director also the Economic Development Director. Put that title on there so that there is no question in the staff's mind what the job is, that that person is going to do, and there is no question in the public's mind who they can come and see. It concerns me to change something that's been working back to something that we changed that was not working. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment and bring it back to discussion by Any discussion? Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll make a quick statement and then probably a motion here, that I, yes, I have lived through this before, but I'm going to put my trust in you, Mr. Trup, that you have an idea of what you want to do here, and I understand the PERS problem. I'm not real clear on the money aspect of it, as shown with just these two tables, but like I say, we have a budget coming up, and we'll probably be deep in the weeds about this. So based upon your desire and want, I'll kind of go against my own intuition here and say, I will go ahead and move staff recommendations on this.
I'll give you a second.
Mayor.
And we need to amend it to exclude the fire chief and fire marshal and battalion fire chief descriptions from that motion?
That's exactly what I was going to say, yes. So if that motion could be amended to do that, I appreciate it.
I will continue my motion with those changes.
Thank you. And I'm assuming that that will be a continued second?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, and yes, there should have been a seven, but we didn't catch it till it went public, so we're just moving on to item eight, and that imaginary item seven? Well, I wonder what it is as a Christmas gift, we'll find out in January, I'm sure. So the council, right? Council approval of application form and selection of appointment process to fill the midterm city council vacancy, and instead of our city manager, as the agenda says, we will have our city attorney, Jeff Malavi, present that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here tonight because of the direction that the council gave on the evening of our December 6 special meeting, which was the last item we had on filling the council vacancy. At that meeting, a schedule for applications to be filed to fill the vacancy was decided on by council, with applications that are going to be accepted until January 3, 2019, or if by mail, postmarked by December 31. And the council decided to hold interviews to fill the council vacancy on January 8 at a special meeting. We have attached as attachment one to the staff report, the application form that staff prepared. Each of the council members individually provided a question to put on the application form. So our first request tonight is that staff approve an application form, and we're proposing the one that's attached to the staff report.
So you would like us to address that item first before progressing as a way to clarify it, or do you want to keep going?
We could do it one at a time, but we'd have to take public comment on each individually, so however you would like to do it.
What is the council's preference to address each item, given, so we're looking at approving the application form, and then considering the appointment process, and then determining order of events? You want to wait and do it all at once? Okay. Continue.
So also at the December 6 meeting, the council requested that staff bring back some potential options for voting procedures that the council could use to select the appointee to fill the vacancy that would reduce the chances of us resulting in a tie that could not be resolved. So it was also requested that we look at what other cities had done in this situation. So what we did is, we contacted the League of California Cities, their general counsel, and he was not able to give us any fantastic ideas that would just solve all of our problems, because as I discovered in thinking about this quite a lot, there doesn't seem to be a way to totally with certainty eliminate the possibility of a tie, unless you use some kind of random selection method when you get down to the two finalists. I'll explain more about that later. The city manager also did some searching and found a California city, it was the city of Concord, that had adopted a process to fill a council vacancy whereby they, if they got down to two final candidates, and it was a tie vote, they used a, what they call by lots, but it basically means drawing straws among those two candidates to decide who would be appointed. State law does not establish any method, as I went over at the last meeting, for how this appointment process should be determined. So the council has discretion to determine whatever process it wishes to use. So I think, like I said, I don't think there's any way to completely with certainty eliminate the possibility of ties, unless we use some kind of drawing straws or picking the highest card type random method if we get down to two finalists. So a simple method that uses that random selection is described on the middle of page two of the staff report, where you have a pool of candidates, each council member gets one vote, and if one candidate receives three votes, well, then that person's appointed, because they received three votes of the council. But if no candidate receives three votes, then any candidate that received at least one vote would go on to a second round, so at most, there would be four. And then you do another round of voting just like that in the second round. If any candidate receives three votes in the second round, they're appointed. If no candidate receives, or any candidate that received at least one vote... If no candidate receives, or any candidate that received at least one vote in that second round could have their names placed into a hat, and then a designated person would pull a name out of a hat, that person would be appointed. So that's the type of simple random selection method that you could use. If you didn't want to do some type of random selection method, then I have proposed two other methods here, numbers one and two, on pages two and three of the staff report, but I am entirely open to ideas because this is a difficult and complex thing to think about. But the number-one method is similar to what the city used in 2014, where it was a multi-round voting process, where you whittle the candidates down through rounds and rounds of voting until you get to two. But along the way, any candidate that received at least three votes in any round could immediately be nominated to be appointed, and then could be appointed with three votes. It is a little complex, there's a few things that you have to watch out for, which is, number one, in order to eliminate, to eliminate to the maximum extent possible, the chance of a tie, in every round, the council members should be required to vote all of their votes and not just some of their votes. Also, in order to reduce the chances of a tie, all the council members should have to use each of their votes for a separate candidate instead of pooling multiple votes with one candidate. Because what can happen is if you're allowed to pool multiple votes with one candidate, it ends up being essentially the same as having every council member have one vote because they will pool all their votes to the candidate that is their number-one choice. You also need to ensure that at least two candidates move on to the next round. If you think about it, if you have seven candidates, there's the potential for a 2-1-1-1-1-1 vote. And what that would mean is that only one candidate would move on to the next round because the way it's set up is any candidate that gets at least two votes moves on to the next round. If you had 2-1-1-1-1-1, then only one candidate would move on to the next round with only two votes, and that's not a good outcome because I don't believe you want to appoint someone that only receives two votes. The second option is a ranked-choice voting, and I want to say that that first option is a pretty good system for whittling the vote, the candidates down to two, but then once you get down to two, it still does not eliminate the possibility of a tie. The second option here is a ranked-choice voting system that's described here in the staff report, but essentially, the, each council member would rank, there's only one round, and each council member would rank all the candidates from, say, there's 10 candidates, you rank them 1 to 7. And you could rank them 1 to 10, but I thought it might be a good idea to do only 1 to 7 so that maybe certain candidates are not embarrassed at being your very last choice. So once you do that, you assign, any candidate that received a one vote gets seven points, say. And every one vote counts for seven points, every two vote counts for six points, every three vote counts for five points, all the way down to every seven ranking vote counts for one point. And you add up all the points, and the person that has the highest score is the person who is appointed. My opinion is that out of all the systems I'm talking about here, that is the one that is the least chance of ending up in a tie. However, it can result in some unexpected outcomes. It can result in someone being appointed, someone winning that system, who was not the first choice of any of the council members, and even who was not the second choice of any of the council members, because that's just the way that the ranking system can work sometimes. Under that, in the staff report, are a few other more creative ideas for breaking any tie that might result. And then, of course, there is the standard traditional nominate-and-vote procedure that is used by the council for appointing commissioners, for instance, where you have a pool of candidates and a council member says, "I nominate this candidate," and you see if you can, if you get three votes. That is also a system that can be used. The third thing that we're asking you to think about tonight is the order of events at the January 8 special meeting. So there are a number of different ways that you can hold that meeting. There are some ideas here in the staff report about whether you want to, when you would like to take public comment, whether you want to have the candidates just give a statement, or whether you'd like to have it be a question-and-answer with the candidates, whether you want the statements to come first and then a question-and-answer period later, or ask them questions right after their statement. These are all possibilities. There's also a decision to be made about whether you should interview candidates one at a time, and the rest of the candidates should be out of the room so that the candidate that goes first doesn't have an advantage, doesn't have a disadvantage. Basically, the candidate that goes last would have an advantage if they got to sit in the room and hear all of the presentations and all the questions that were asked to the other candidates before they got up to speak. So it's just something to consider. There potentially could be pros of having everybody stay in the room as well. Those three things are what we're asking the council to decide on tonight and to propose. I guess another idea is to propose a system, and then if it does end up in a tie that doesn't look like it can be resolved, we think of another idea at that point to try to resolve the tie. We can do that, too. So I'm available for questions. We do need to take public comment on this item two, and that concludes the staff report.
Councilmember Vega.
Jeff, under the one, one vote each or nominating someone and do it just like we do as a routine item here on the dais, is there a way of doing that and then having some other system for the tiebreaker? That's what we're looking at, okay, but I mean, as far as the appointment, somebody nominates, somebody may gives it a second, and people vote, I mean, is that, is that out of the, out of the box here? It's a little different than a point system, but I think the end result is the same thing.
It very well could work. Essentially, the way that you appoint commissioners, council member nominates one, then you vote on it. If it gets three votes, that person's appointed. It very well could work. Or you could end up in 2-2 ties in that kind of a system. But that is, I mean, if your proposal was to attempt that kind of system first and see what happens, and then if it looks like it's not working out, then we decide on another system, that would be okay.
Because it seems like it would be a little simpler, something we're used to, people are used to this. It's the same way we put on commissioners or committee members. I think what people are trying to do is distance themselves from, you know, to another method of point system. Maybe it looks a little bit more neutral and personal, but that's how we do business.
Mr. Throop.
Mayor, Council, one issue that might come up with that is if more than one council person had someone they wanted to nominate, who gets to nominate first? So it's who's quickest to the draw to say, "I want to nominate somebody," has to go to a vote, it might not.
But that wouldn't be any different, sir, would it, than anything else we do for a council request or anything like that? I mean, unless you want the kudos or you want your name in the paper to say, "I did it first."
No, I'm just thinking if separate council members had different people that they wanted to nominate, and if the first one who nominates gets the three votes, the other one may feel that they didn't get a chance to nominate somebody else. I'm just trying to state that.
I got you. I'm listening.
So before we go to public comment, after receiving the staff report, I did some additional research, and while, yes, the simplistic method would be allow a nomination and confirmation and vote, I think that it brings up the who gets to the button first issue, and that the transparency and the requests by the community for us to do something that is both fair and transparent is really important. So I came across a rather new, it's being utilized in a couple of counties in Oregon, it's called star voting, and it's score then automatic runoff. And what it is, is a scoring system much like the ranking system, where you have your candidates and you have a scoring system that you then allot a number based on your scale of 0 to 5 or 0 to 9. And the winner's determined in two simple steps. So all the scores for all the candidates are added up, and then immediately we hand those over, and the second step is an automatic runoff. So our first step, we automatically score everyone, and we're done. And then we take the two highest-scoring candidates, not necessarily a tie, but two highest-scoring candidates, and we evaluate those two candidates based on how we each individually ranked them. And while a tie is still possible, it rarely occurs, and potentially gives a 3-1 or a 4-0 confirmation to most likely the top scorer. So it's a suggestion, I know that I didn't get a chance to get it in as part of the staff report, I did bring it forward to the city attorney to look at, and he did share that it was very similar to the ranking score, and I just wanted to put it out there, I did have the city clerk make a few copies. It is from a nonpartisan website that is looking to find ways to address these kind of issues. So it's pretty straightforward. We do a round of however we decide to interview them, we score, we hand that score sheet over, it's totaled up, the top two vote-getters are determined, and then they go through and look at how we ranked those two on that score, and only look at those two. So the spreadsheet behind you kind of shows that. You would have however many candidates you have, and we would score them, and then the votes would be put in place, you'd get a total score. For easiest ranking, it's helpful to see an average because then you can see the difference even more. So in this scenario, you end up with candidate two and candidate three having the highest ranking, so you take them to the automatic runoff, no discussion, just their names gone, and then you go back and you look at voter A. And what did voter A do with two and three? Well, they gave a higher ranking to three, so voter A point goes to candidate three. On voter B, when you look at candidate two and three, candidate B scored voter B, scored candidate two higher, so the vote goes to voter B. And so you go through each one and you look at just the two candidates, you look at how they originally scored them, and based on who ranked it higher, the point goes to that particular candidate. And you see, in this scenario, you end up with a 3-1. You could end up with a 4-0, you could end up still with a 2-2, but in most of the evaluations, it's rare for a tie. And it becomes very transparent and is very similar to the multiple rounds without the multiple rounds, and immediately gets you to two candidates to evaluate. So I know that it may sound a little complicated, but it's actually pretty straightforward, and I just wanted to share that as another opportunity to still do a ranking and a scoring, but simplify it rather than multiple rounds. So I'll just put that out there for consideration while we go to public comment unless anyone has a question that either myself or the city attorney might be able to address. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open it up to public comment.
My name is Lorraine Waldell, and I spoke last time, and last meeting was a very encouraging meeting, and the overwhelming comments were about transparency and looking at how we will be implementing this district-based voting in the future. And I think that while it's really, the easiest thing to do is to do how it was done in the past, our city isn't just like it was in the past, nor is our voting in the future just like in the past. So I think that this star voting, which doesn't take forever, is a good choice. I hadn't heard about that until you just spoke about it. But I don't think we should just fall back beyond the last meeting, because the last meeting was really a powerful meeting, and I think was very, the citizens felt pretty supported at that meeting, so thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one additionally rise, oh, come on up.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. As the former speaker here so eloquently said, the last meeting was very powerful. I like the idea of the star point system, and if it came down to a 2-2 tie, flip a coin. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dwayne Holmdahl, citizen of Lompoc, Lompoc Valley. The only question I have, it's not really a question, but we may have to let, make sure all the candidates understand, this seat is to fill, the seat that Janelle is leaving. And so if they do run for election and go into that, they had to live in that area after the first two years. So I think you've got to realize what the score is because it doesn't put in there automatic, they've got to live in that. But the two years they're in office, that's fine because that's the way it worked out. But I think all candidates need to understand that there's no guarantee on the second time in two years.
Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, a couple of things I'll mention here. I like the appointment application. I think one of the things that would be very important is obviously we would want to review the four submitted questions, but on the last page here with the additional information, maybe we should make that a, something, a three-minute convinces face-to-face rather than interviews. We have four questions, we would have, you know, come up, you speak, and as much as this star voting sounds like Chinese arithmetic as it was described, I understand it when I look at it hard, and I don't have any issues with this. And if the rest of the council would want to, I mean, would that be the two items that you need, Jeff? Process and procedure?
We need the application form to be decided on, we need the voting system to be decided on, and then we also need an order of events for the meeting of the eighth.
Well, the order of events, then, wouldn't it be, council would review the applications, we get them a few days in advance, and the last one where it says additional information rather than have it written but a verbal, and then...
So are you proposing that for the application form, we take off the last question, additional information, and then we request that in the, during the interviews, that the candidates should present that information as part of their presentation?
Limit it to a three-minute verbal presentation.
Okay.
That way, you know, you see who you're looking at, you know, you, there's, there's a lot of factors that come in here. Everything here is anonymous if we were to just do applications.
Okay.
I mean, we have four written questions, and then a very, you know, quick, explain the reason you desire to be appointed.
For clarification, if I recall, the applications become public documents, so it's not that those four questions aren't, the answers aren't seen by the public because those also become public documents, so that's not necessarily hidden. So I just, for clarification, correct?
Yes, the application forms, after they're filled out and we receive them, are going to be part of the packet for the January 8 meeting. The com- to be part of the packet for the January 8th meeting, the completed forms with addresses and phone numbers redacted.
No, I mean, I would make that motion if somebody on the council would have any additional input on it, that we would go ahead and, you know, make the appointment application as it is and do a, an actual verbal statement to the council and we would use this proposed STAR voting.
Councilmember Mosley.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why they couldn't go ahead and fill that out in writing and then go ahead and give the three-minute as well. So, I mean, I'd give you a second if you'd modify that to leave out the written as well as do the...
Absolutely, a consensus is good.
I agree with keeping the application the same also and then if, give them the opportunity to speak would be fine.
And mayor, just for clarification, we've, we were able to get staff. It's designed to be a fillable PDF online, so it should help them do it. They can just print it off afterwards, sign it, mail it, or drop it off.
Okay.
Just a quick question would be, the only modification done at this point to the appointment application would be the very last item that would say a three-hour comment.
Three hours?
Three hours. No, I'll be here all day, I'm sorry. I was on Gilligan's Island for a minute.
Up to three minutes.
No, a three-minute, a three-minute presentation then on the bottom of this.
So, the process that you're proposing is each applicant steps forward and focuses their three minutes on that final question, whether it takes all that information or not, that's what they utilize that time for is to address...
They're all smart people, we'll let them talk about whatever they want for three minutes.
Got it. Preferably that item, got it. So, any other questions, councilmember Vega?
No, are we going to take these as separate items as far as procedure and voting for the application and the STAR process or not the STAR process?
The motion's been made to accept all as a, as a single item.
Oh, that's right. We did say that, right?
Yes, the motion has been made to accept the application as is, to utilize the STAR process and for the actual day of, that there be a three-minute presentation by each candidate.
Sure. And how about procedure? Can we throw that in there too and do it all at once is my question?
Yes, that was, that was part of the motion.
Did you finish what you were saying there, councilman, as far as procedure? Because I was thinking Jeff made some specific, gave us some choices here on protocol. As far as do we, would we like to have them interview individually and have the other applicants out, out there in the foyer? And would they be more comfortable or does that give them a little bit more privacy to come in?
Well, in order to make an equitable process, I would just like to use the application as is. The only thing is, is if you're applying and say Mayor Osborne gets up and says something in three minutes and go, ooh, that was really good, I'm going to use her line, you know...
You like that?
You know, I don't see it happening, but I guess the whole thing is, we don't need to exclude people, you know, here it is, it's already written, we've had it for days. The only thing that we, that's really the mystery is the three minutes of, of comment.
The intent of if people, thank you, mayor and council, the intent was if you decided to have a verbal question besides the written one, then that would be that advantage coming at the end of the last person to have an advantage. If you didn't do a verbal question...
I don't see anything wrong with allowing them a little privacy if we wanted to ask something, but again, you know, public comment, Jeff, a little bit awkward as we do this. Maybe you could give me some, or give us some suggestions on how we would do this, okay? The public comment part of it.
I have a few questions that I need to get clarified before that motion is voted on. So, one of them is, well, maybe the first one to start with is, what order do we want to have the candidates make their presentation in then? Is alphabetical order the way that you'd like to do it? It's an important question because there can be advantages or disadvantages for who gets to go first and who's last.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Could we have the attorney draw the names out of a hat?
We could do that.
That works.
Okay, so, random order.
Random order.
And then, does the council want to have only presentations by the candidates or do you want to have presentations and then a separate question and answer period where you can ask questions on the spot?
Comments, member Vega?
Yes, I like that proposal.
Are you looking at one question per councilmember for each candidate or are you looking at...
No, one question per candidate, I would say.
Just one question per candidate? Because that limits it to only one councilmember asking a question.
Got you, okay.
That would have to be the same question.
It would then have to be the same question.
Okay, let me refer to city attorney again to clarify what I'm trying to project out there as far as our options for questioning.
Well, yeah, if you, if you wanted to have the presentations and then another section of the meeting after the presentations could be just an open question and answer period where any of you could ask any question you want on the spot to the person at the podium. That's one option. Another option is, you could ask the same quest, the rules would be that you have to ask the same question to every candidate and get a response from each one of the candidates.
Yeah, I got you.
That could be one question from each of you, or it could be a question that you all decide that you want to ask them, but you kind of already have that in the application form.
I think the application is pretty self-explanatory there, we already have questions there.
Okay, so, what I'm hearing from, from that is no question and answer period on the interview day.
That's, I think we have the application, they're getting an opportunity to explain themselves, we're also giving them three, three minutes to do another explanation, so I don't think another presentation is necessary, in my opinion.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay, next question.
We need to have a public comment period at some point on January 8th. So, would you like to have a public comment period before the presentations even take place where the public would be commenting on the application forms? Or do you want to have it after the presentations take place? Or would you want to have two public comment periods, one before and one after?
Councilmember Vega?
I think one prior would be good, so we have input from the public for transparency. We put them first, we want to be transparent, so their opinions are important right off the get-go. A second public comment period, I'm not, I'm not sure if, if we need it. It seems like after that, the decision's going to be made and, but I'm kind of open for another suggestion here if you want a second public comment period.
No, I would absolutely agree with you there. I think that a public comment period after the interview, the presentation by each of the candidates, it, it would be nothing more than the public trying to influence a decision of the council, which is the right thing to do, but on the other hand, you don't want to have 50 people show up for cheering one candidate on. I think that the beginning would be the way to do it, you get the input, it's going to be about the process, not the person.
I agree, the beginning would be great, would be fine with me. And not after.
Any other questions on that topic? Okay, next question.
So, we have agreement on that one?
I'm going to add it to the motion, are we going to add that to the motion?
Have you got it all down or would you like the clerk to reread this motion?
I've, I've got it all down.
Yeah, I'll give you whatever.
I'll go ahead and agree with it then.
It's part of consensus, yes.
Well, I need a second from the secondor. Thank you. So, the motion on the floor is that we will use the current application, that the final question can be utilized as their three-minute, the public comment period will come before, the applicants will be randomly selected in order by the attorney, and we will use the STAR scoring system as the process for choosing.
I'm sorry to, go ahead, councilmember Starbuck.
I was just going to mention, you said that they would use the last question as the three minutes, but I thought we were going to go ahead and keep that as it was and then add a three-minute comment.
Okay, all right, thanks for clarifying. That was why I was repeating was for clarification because we had made enough changes.
I think I have one more. Wait, wait, what was that?
The additional information, explain the reason that we wanted the narrative on would stay and then we were going to add the three-minute after that.
Right.
Okay. Councilmember Vega?
And I think one thing I didn't hear us reference was whether they were going to be in here on a one-on-one basis or if we were going to have them all together. Maybe we could clarify that if we want to interview each one to the public and have the, the rest of the candidates out in the foyer.
What I heard is that the council had decided to have everyone in the room for the entire meeting. Is that correct?
That is what I heard.
Okay.
You know, the application's done, it's there, the only thing is the three minutes that none of the others have heard and all, if you have five candidates, there's going to be five different three-minute, you know, comments.
Thanks for clarifying, but it's not three hours either, okay? Thank you.
Okay. So, we're all clear?
We're all clear on the procedure.
Okay.
Just, would there be questions after the three-minute presentation?
Currently, we have decided not to have questions.
Okay, we're all clear on the procedure. Now, I have a question about the STAR voting system.
Sure.
The way that I understand it is, there's going to be a pool of candidates and each one of the councilmembers is going to give a certain number of points to each one of the candidates. Is that right?
That is how it is designed. It is a score system and the current presentation that they have in front of them is you can do it at a zero to five with zero being no support and five being max support. We could make it a scale of zero to nine, it just complicates depending on what scale, but...
I, I think a five is fine.
Okay.
My question is, is a councilmember able to rank every candidate five? Is it, are they able to give every candidate a five? Or do they have to give a five to only one person and then a four to another person and a three to another person?
So, by design, the STAR allows an individual to score multiple candidates with the same number. So, several candidates could end up with a three, a four, or a five. Where you have to take into consideration doing that is in the automatic runoff because what happens there is when candidate two and three are selected as the top vote getters and you go back to say, it's my vote and I've given both those candidates a four, my vote is negated because now I have said, it doesn't bother me which one of these you choose because I gave them the same score. So, that's a conscientious choice. My encouragement is to those of us to actually rank so that it reduces that, but again, it's to the voter. Now, we can choose to change our minds and say, no, we're not going to allow ourselves to give everybody a four, everybody a one. So, we can make that choice to say, no duplications of the rankings, but that only works if we only have six candidates and we can each issue them a different number. If we have eight candidates and we go with a scoring of five, somebody's going to end up with multiples of the same scoring level potentially.
Yes, unless you have the highest score be the number of candidates, that would be a way to fix it.
Exactly, and you could change it so that the voting system, the scoring system reflects the number of candidates. So, if we end up with nine candidates, it would be zero to nine. If we ended up with 11, it would be zero to 11 and then we could mandate a single score to each one and no duplications of the same number.
In my opinion, that is the way to best reduce the chances of a tie if you do it that, just as you described it.
Okay. So, I'm happy to make the motion to change the score sheet based on reflection of the number of actual applicants we end up with and request that we each score the candidates with a single selection rather than giving the candidates, several of the candidates a one or several of them a four. Does that, does that understand?
You'd like me to add that to the motion?
I would.
Like I said earlier, it's kind of Chinese arithmetic when I looked up here, but I understand it. Like you say, it would reduce the risk of the tie.
Mm-hmm.
And it is new and there's always the option if something is a tie to stop and reconsider what to do, so I will include that in my motion.
Okay. You have a second to that, Mr. Vega?
I just wanted to make sure, so, only one person can get a five, well, if there's nine, one person gets a nine, you get an eight, you get a seven. So, it's not as was, it was explained before, it's as you explained now.
It's as we explain now, yes. And that's, and, and just to clarify, each councilmember has to use all their votes, right? They have to rank a nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other clarifications? Any other questions regarding our motion? What we got there, I am impressed. All right, if no further discussion, we will take a vote. And that passes four-zero. Thank you so very much for working so hard on, coming together on a difficult topic. Applications are available here if you would like to take one with you before you leave. So, back to the agenda item, written communications, madam clerk.
Nothing.
Thank you. The oral communications, the final for the evening is two minutes. If you have anything you'd like to say, please step forward for two minutes.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. Testimony at the budget workshop was informative. A citizen testified Vandenberg Air Force Base does not feel embraced by Lompoc. What a shock, that's huge. Was quite a revelation. Service members put their lives at risk to keep America safe. They, along with our safety personnel, represent the very best of America. In addition, the base is a source of vitality and revenue for our community. The lack of embrace statement aligns with recent prior observations. At both the Memorial Day and military memorial dedication ceremonies at the cemetery, the base commander was visibly surprised and moved by the large turnout of citizens. He told us so. I was confused as to why he didn't expect us all to be there. At a Lompoc Unified School District Board meeting last summer, I witnessed testimony from several Vandenberg Air Force Base families. Their stories rocked the conscience. I had never heard anything like it in my decades of education advocacy. They spoke of their children being abused at school, bullying, sexual harassment and abuse so severe at Lompoc schools, they requested transfers at less pay just to get away from Lompoc. One mother described moving to Lompoc with a healthy, successfully engaged family and leaving Lompoc with children suffering from PTSD as a result of their experiences here. It's partially the reason I got involved with sexuality education and ran for school board. It now seems this may be a larger problem with all of those instances. Action is necessary, I think, to investigate what needs to be addressed. This is confusing. The FBI may be the agency with proper tools to move this forward. I think we should do this.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional public comments? Seeing none, we'll close that and move to council requests, comments, and meeting reports. We'll start with you, Mr. Vega.
I do have a council request that I'd like to get re-clarified as far as general plan and workshop and putting this on an agendized timeline so that we can come back and review and make any change to any of the elements in the general plan. I understand everyone's been busy with zoning amendments and zoning, the zoning update, but I think it's really important that we have a city manager that's proposing to try and move the Bailey Corridor aspect of this forward, but he needs the tools from which, for us to push against the resistance from Lafco who's basically said no to all our annexation requests. I think it's, it's imperative that we go back and look at the general plan and change some of the verbiage that has prevented growth in the last few decades. There are verbiages that, and I'll give you an example of say that shall, and I'm going to give you another example that should be changed to should or some other verbiage that will allow the city manager to come in and fight for Lompoc as far as some sustainable growth that needs to happen here so that we can have a variety of, of choices and be able to compete with anything that we were talking about as far as Vandenberg Air Force Base. And so, we need to, and anything, anyone else that would like to invest in Lompoc, so we need to put on our thinking cap as a whole and together move forward in a different fashion. We seem to pick a straight line, but we're not looking exactly at what's stopping us. So, we tend to hit these block walls and I think we can do better. So, I'd like to propose that. Another element I'd like to look at in the general plan because it's a budgetary item is the economic development element of the general plan because it is a budgetary issue and it's going to come up on our city manager's budget. I'm sure in the future here, we're getting ready for budget talks and I think the council needs to have a discussion on, on funding and where that funding's going because there are numerous groups and, and people that are being funded by this. And I think it just, out of respect, we just need to have that discussion with our planning manager to see what we can do to better facilitate... to see what we can do to better facilitate and make sure that the money that's used is going to the best plan, plan of action for Lompoc. That's kind of my motion, or my council request, I'd like us to, either you call it as a workshop, or whatever they need to call it, but we need to have it brought back within a timeline of maybe 60 days to make sure that it comes back. If you look back on all our proposed agendized items since last year, it's been coming up on every sheet, but it hasn't been scheduled as far as even a council workshop to discuss this. So I think it's really important for us to move forward, so that's my request, my council request to the Council.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Longest council request I've heard in a while, Mr. Vega.
I'm really, I'm really passionate about that, that's why, Dirk.
Yeah, I understand. Other unscheduled items that's listed here, Mr. Thru, maybe we could get a commitment on a date for that. I mean, it's already been approved as a council request prior, it's just putting a date to, to do the workshop.
Let me look to our planning manager real quick.
Mayor, members of the Council, I can certainly look at some dates, and I apologize that I haven't brought it back. A workshop is needed, and also, if we do any changes to the general plan, there's going to need to be a budget for the environmental review. I purposely kind of put it on hold because of the zoning ordinance, that's, you're going to see in a matter of two months. I would like to just say that it hasn't been ignored, as part of the Bailey Avenue annexation application, we are looking at the policies and the land use element, and we can certainly look at other policies in the general plan that may prevent that application from moving forward, so we have heard you, it's just we haven't come back with the workshop because of all the meetings we've been having with the zoning ordinance, but I can certainly, if the request, everyone is agreeing on that...
Well, we had a, Brian, if I could interject, the, we already had a consensus way back in 2017, so it's been being, it's been ignored for a long time, so I think it's really important for us to move forward, and, and thank you so much, okay? I just want you to know, we don't need another vote, it's already on here.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing Mr. Halverson propose is to go back and look at the calendar and come back in January with a date, because I know you're asking for one.
Yes, I am.
So he's acknowledging that, that we've approved it, and he's asking us to allow him to look at the calendar and bring back a date after we have appointed our missing candidate and move forward, how's that?
That's perfect.
Okay. I will give you a third for...
Thank you so much.
...allowing him to find a date.
Brian, thank you, okay, and I know you guys are busy, but I want to give our city manager all the tools that he had, that he, that's needed for LAFCO, okay? I think that anything will help.
Certainly, we'll look at some dates and bring that back.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck?
No reports.
Councilmember Mosby?
Just a comment to everybody, you know, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, looking out there at the happy faces out there, and be safe, be safe everybody, make it back, thank you.
I'd like to thank staff for working so hard right as we approach the holidays, first for pulling together the Christmas parade, and to the Lompoc Valley Flower Festival team for working with the city staff to deliver, once again, a very successful and safe parade, I really appreciate that. To the staff for the budget workshop, it was really educational, I've had wonderful feedback from the community, and they look forward to continuing that discussion and to the transparency we're providing on that. And then finally, for those of you that may have only just tuned in, a reminder that City Hall will be closed until January 2nd after this Friday, but that you can still pay your bills through the phone system, and somebody will be available to answer and trash, except on Christmas and New Year's Day, we'll still be picked up. So happy holidays, and thank you all, as the fellow council have said, be safe, and we are adjourned until the regular meeting of 6:30 PM on Tuesday, January 15th, 2019, but do not forget the January 8th meeting for the appointment process. Thank you, and good night.